Yes, they will. The chairman will announce that. Public comment. John now.
We are on.
Looks like we are. Good evening. Welcome to the public portion of the meeting of the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen of October 4th, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We have a couple of public announcements before we get to public comment portion of the hearing. The first is to remind everybody of our town meeting. It is going to be on November 15th, I believe. That's the correct date, isn't it, Bob?
Correct.
And it's going to commence at 6 o'clock at the Matiche Middle School. A lot of important things will be on the article, so I invite everyone to come and exercise their right to vote on these important matters. Second item we would like to remind people of is the election, our next election, which is going to be have federal and state offices. That's going to, on the ballot, that's going to be on November the 8th. There's other information that will apply to early voting and absentee voting, but I will have the, hopefully, the town clerk come and announce that or have a separate announcement to make on that. The third item I would like to bring to everyone's attention. What was the date on that flu clinic? I want to make sure I got that right, Peter.
Bruce, flu clinic?
Yeah.
Date?
October 28th.
October 28th, okay. So we're going to have a flu clinic. We historically more often than not have had them, but with COVID and change in practices with some people, you know, frequenting other locations for vaccinations. I don't think we had one the last year, maybe even last couple of years, but we are going to have one this year. It's going to be on October 28th at the Pius X Parish Life Center between the hours of 3:00 PM and 5:00 PM. You need an appointment, but that's not a real big deal. You just have to call the town, the Board of Health. Their general number is 508-398-2231, and the extension will be 1241. So you just make an appointment between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00. You have to bring a photo ID and your insurance card with you. And the insurance coverage is, almost all of them will cover the flu shots, so it won't cost you anything. So that would be, that's a great thing. I'm glad we're having that back. I'm very happy about that. It'll be, and there is no residency requirement, as I recall, so if somebody is not a Yarmouth resident and they want to come here and get the flu shot, they can do so. So now we'll move, if there's no other public announcements, we'll move, yes, we'll move to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom Nekel from very historic precinct three. I do have a couple of announcements I'd like to make. Thank you very much. The Water Resource Advisory Committee will be at the Cultural Center on the 17th of this month at 5:00 PM to have an open session with the public about our most important topic in our community for a number of decades, which would be wastewater. Our next announcement, as you all know, is our town is fed by our real estate taxes, and they're due in a couple of weeks, November 1st. We also are looking for some qualified people for the town. The town is hiring. You know, a lot of people only watch the few first segments of this meeting, so I thought I'd get this in. We also are looking for some qualified and extremely talented volunteers. At one time, pre-COVID, we had over 300 volunteers, and I think we're down just a slight number. So we could use a few more volunteers if anybody would want to donate their time to help their wonderful community. Also, tomorrow, 10:05 here in the hearing room, the planning board will have some open public meetings, which is extremely important for our community. Anybody that would like to participate, you can feel free to come here to the town hall or via Zoom, which is a great technology, and it can open the doors for many opportunities. Also, the 6th, which is Thursday, is the 6th Thursday at the Senior Center. You know, our community is extremely fortunate to have an abundance of neighborhood crime watch people, and our crime watch organization has been established in our community for many years through many police chiefs. And the new chief in waiting is dying to carry on the organization as it is. There'll be a meeting there, which is open to the public, to celebrate the chief's, Frank Frederson's chief, to celebrate his tenure as our number one cop. So also, being a member of the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce, you know, 1962, Kevin White signed the papers that we were organized, and we have been working hand in hand with our town for many decades with extreme, extreme positive results. And as our commercial tax rate has decreased over a few decades, there's just a few of us left, and I'm sure everyone here has been invited by the executive director. That will be on 10/19, standing at 5:00, I believe, at the Red Jacket. Please attend. Thank you very much. And just last two announcements, there's 83 days till Christmas, and 137 days till the second annual winter carnival here in Yarmouth. Thank you all.
Mr. Nekel, one question on the water resources on the 17th at the Cultural Center. What time?
5:00, Mr. Chair.
5:00. Very important to attend.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you.
Okay, before you go, I'm going to, Bruce, go ahead, come to the microphone. I'm just going to read the hybrid notice into the record. This is the formally advised that as required by General Law's Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16, 2021, is extended by special legislation dated July 16, 2022. Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold its public meeting on Tuesday, October 4th, 2022, commencing at 5:45 PM, beginning with the executive session. It opened to the public no sooner than 6:00 PM in the hearing room at Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below. And the various ways of joining on computer and by telephone are listed on the agenda which is posted. Go ahead, Bruce.
Yes, I just wanted to give the board and the public at home an update on the COVID test kits. We just received 6,000 kits today from the state, so we have plenty of test kits that we're making available to the public. We've been making them available for the last month or so because we've picked up some from Outer Cape, but they're available at Town Hall at the opening foyer when you first come in. We put 50 to 60 up there every day. We have them available in the health department. We bring them to each of our libraries in town that they're available for pickup, along with the Cultural Center has them available. We're working with the local churches in town to provide them also, and we're at the food pantry. So we are getting out there as much as possible. We'll have them available when people come in to pay their taxes. They'll get a little kit on their way out. So we have to put a sticker on each one that says they're extended in time to, for another three to six months, so they'll be available. So just let the public know. We'll be putting information out on our social media and in the newspaper also. So that's hot breaking news that was delivered this afternoon.
I have heard different stories as to when, if a person is taking a home test and they have symptoms they feel are COVID symptoms. I've heard that they should wait the next day and take a test, and then I've heard, no, they should wait 48 hours and take a second test. What's the protocol on that?
It's kind of gone back and forth. What we've said, if you feel like you have symptoms, take a test. If they're, supposedly, they're 95 to 97% accurate, these home tests. So we would say, take one as soon as you feel like you have symptoms. There's two tests in each kit, so if you want to take one, you know, another day afterwards, that's fine, and you can always come back and get more kits.
Somebody asked me recently about, do you remember, I'm sure you do remember, but the town Board of Health used to give out iodine tablets because if there was some risk of nuclear contamination, I assume from that nuclear plant that was shut down. Do they, is that still something that people should be concerned about in having access to those tablets?
The, once the plant was shut down a couple of years ago, the State Department of Public Health did not require test kits anymore, and they had the test KI pills, and they've all expired.
They have.
Anybody that has them, and we've had people come in because it's in their home emergency planning kits, and they've noticed that they've expired, and they're no longer available.
So how should people dispose of those expired medicines? Are they anything that requires any special handling or anything?
No, just in the trash would be fine.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, or Bruce? All right, thank you very much. Any other public comment? Yes. Three little customer now. This is your second one.
Well, thank you, Mr. Stone. Thank you very much. I just wanted to explain a little bit about my public announcements, if I can, please. You know, out of our 319 towns and our 32 cities, we have 14 counties in the state. And the one thing that's really great today is you can view all those meetings that they all have throughout Commonwealth via internet. And what we've all noticed, and what I've noticed, and what I think has been mentioned here a couple of times, is that, you know, we are not getting the communication we used to because of the problem with the press, and our newspapers have gone away. So what I'd like to share, and what I did share with early, and I'm glad the chair had made a couple of announcements, is that I've noticed that a lot of our communities in the public portion of the announcements have been doing their own advocating and communicating to the public. So I did that tonight for a reason, to show that, you know, we don't really need other people to communicate what we need to communicate. We can do it ourselves here in this forum in the few minutes that we have in the beginning of each meeting. As I said prior, you know, majority of the people that watch these meetings only hang on for a few, and then they drop off. So I just wanted to explain what I did tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, that's obviously, and Mark and I have both had a lot of comment on this, when he was chairman as well. It's a challenge. Communication is a real challenge since we've lost, basically have lost the press coverage. I remember them, we used to have somebody from the Times, somebody from the Register, and within a couple of days, any breaking news or important news was spread instantly and very widely, and you could tell because people would come and talk to you about those items. So you knew they were getting that information. And information that's disseminated by professional people that know how to make an interesting story out of it, I think is even more of a promotion of the information or the material that you're trying to get across. But your point's well taken. I think we have to do what we can do, and I think making public announcements is certainly one of those resources. Posting things on our website. Just general selectmen discussion, information disseminated through Town Hall. People can come to town. Meetings would be good. There's a lot of things happening there. There's a lot of information and ideas that are exchanged there. But it's something on our radar and something we're trying to maximize. But it is, I mean, you could tell the difference. It's a profound difference. It really is. All right, so do we have any other public comment? Anybody up on the, oh, yes, this gentleman likes.
Hey, gentlemen. Bill Ferguson from over in Yarmouth Port. And I came down here tonight hoping there would be a large turnout inquiring about the 2023 tax levies. And I was hoping you might address the why's of the increases being so, so large, how this comes to pass, and your assessment of the ramifications of this extremely high assessment and the resulting levies on the people.
Were you the gentleman that wrote us an email about your assessment? I think it was, like, you said it went up 20%?
I am one. That is correct.
Okay. That's, you know, that's a very good question. I don't have an answer for you, but maybe we can get somebody from the assessors, get the assessor himself in here to, I remember one year that happened to me. I mean, I got a, it wasn't recently, it was several years back, but it was a dramatic increase in one year. That didn't happen regularly from year to year, but I know I got a spike like that in one year, and I really don't know why that happens. Believe it or not, I actually got a couple of people said their taxes went down, and that's a rarity. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I just be recognized for a point of order? I think we all appreciate your comments, sir. Public comment, there's actually on our agenda. It explains what public comments are all about. The open meeting law discourages us from actually discussing topics that are not on our agenda. So for people to come in tonight, so if we, if we sound evasive, it's only because the open meeting law really prevents us from engaging in a discussion about appropriations, expenses, and the various components of a tax bill. So this is something that we could put on for a future agenda item and actually list it, notify the public, and then have a public discussion on. But unfortunately, during public comments, we really can't engage in a dialogue with you under the open meeting law. We're prevented from doing that.
Well, excuse my ignorance of the procedures here. If this could be scheduled, if the people could be made aware of this, there are questions as to how and why. I think an awful lot of people share. I've been in and out of the assessor's office, and I'm unable to get any definitive answers on why and how. So take it. And if you can let the public know that there are some concerns, and if they care to voice their opinions, I'd love to have the opportunity to continue on with this sometime.
It's a valid question, and we'll see what we can do to get an agenda item for you.
How would one find out that this was put on the agenda?
Well, we post the agenda every week online, and you send an email. Is your phone number on there, on that email?
Yes.
So we would have that contact information, and hopefully, we could get somebody from inside Town Hall to let you know about it.
Good. Love to pursue it. I've got a lot of questions involving around that, and would entertain any time, any place.
Okay.
Thank you much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Do we have anybody on the screen? Vita's on there. Vita, can you hear me? You're going to have to unmute yourself.
Right, too. Can you hear me now? I could hear you the whole time. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I just, before you go any further, I would like to second the suggestion that this gentleman just made about the assessing, you know, of our taxes this particular year. I'm experiencing over the last two or three years a gyration. So I would very much like to have some on the agenda of a meeting sometime soon to discuss that with the assessor. So I want to second that gentleman's suggestion, okay? The other thing is, the town warrant, I see that the wording in the agenda today is a review, which I guess doesn't, excludes a public comment on that particular item in the agenda. And I guess I was given a suggestion to, you know, bring it up in the public comment period, but there are so many things that I would want to talk about with respect to that. And the fact that the last couple of town moderators have even made some kind of snide remarks about people who are, you know, at town meeting, taking up time, asking too many questions and what have you. But if we don't get an opportunity to do that ahead of town meeting, then that's what we have to do. And I think you have to, I think there was an attempt made at one point to try and give the the town taxpayers an opportunity to comment on the articles in the warrant, you know, and then it just kind of petered out again. I wish you would bring that back, please. Now, the one thing there that bothers me a great deal is this, the water meter situation where, you know, the water department would be, I guess, keeping tabs on people, how much usage there is, and people with irrigation registering and what have you. And there's a word in there, in one of the Article 18, I guess, something about the town's police powers or something. I tell you, that whole thing smacks literally of Gestapo tactics. I don't understand what's going on here. Why do we need to have this kind of control? And first of all, I think we should start by going back and having the water department take a look how much water was used after the notice that came out that we have to conserve earlier in the summer. We need to get some data and see how the voluntary action worked and what have you. But, and to put this, does this rise actually to the level of a bylaw? It's ridiculous, and nobody, I think the public had absolutely no time to make their feelings known. I just think that something needs to be done. This, this whole article needs to be withdrawn, and we have to have much better discussion and put it off until, if they insist on going forward, put it off to the spring meeting, I think. Now, I do, also on the agenda, I read the information from the police department about hiring a mental health clinician. I would just like for the chief to explain a little more carefully because there's a period there where, I mean, they seem to have a grant under which they have two employees right now, part-time, I guess, or something like that. And that grant runs out at the end of the fiscal year, June 30th of next year. So I would like to, for him to state very clearly that in FY '24, what exactly, what kind of personnel he proposes to have, whether it's just going to be one person with the new name, or some, you know, the mental health clinician, or, and somebody else, but I hope that we are not going, we now have, I think, a social worker at the police department. So I want to know what that whole situation would look like after what they're asking for at the moment. So when that comes up at the, at the time of tonight's agenda, I hope that that will be clarified. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vita. Kurt, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah.
Hello. Tell everybody who you are.
Kurt Seas from Yarmouth Port. I've had a couple of conversations with the administration about these issues, but green communities, I asked who's trained in green communities, who knows what it's all about. Now, maybe I was misinformed when we originally proposed to the people that they pass this. But part of it was, no more hand-me-down vehicles. We're going to try and buy the most fuel-efficient vehicles we can, you know, energy efficiency in the buildings, all that. Well, we have a truck that was supposed to be retired from service five years ago because it was in such poor condition, we had to replace it and buy a new truck, which we did through capital budget. And I just learned this truck has still been in service for the last either four or five years. I'm not sure the exact date. And they decided to do a whole bunch of rust repair on this truck, put a new engine, new or rebuilt engine and transmission in the truck. And then they're coming to the town meeting this fall for more automobile, vehicle repair money, and you're only three months into the cycle. It'd be nice to know what happened there. And then there's another issue where this truck was refurbished for a particular person who has now decided they don't like it, or I don't know what the story is, but they're not using that truck. It's gone to somebody else. And a truck that was purchased with particular funds for a particular purpose is no longer being used for that purpose. So, and I was, again, I was saying, between procurement and green communities, I think there needs to be a huge education effort made to the employees of this town to make sure they're complying with both. Whether they be a procurement officer or not, they should at least know the process and what's legal and not legal. So, and then, you know, I think things look kind of ratty around here. So, again, I was talking to Bob and Bill. Maybe we try to encourage people to adopt the curb in front of their property, and I think the town should stop by doing the same. Because if you start in the spring weed whack on the curb at the sidewalk or at the road edge, it's an easy task. Probably takes 10 minutes. You just run the weed whacker down the road, and you're done. You know, you get to the end of the year, it's three feet tall, two feet tall, it looks like mess. It's like, you know, the old broken window syndrome. It looks like nobody cares. So I would encourage the town to start by doing their own, and then over the winter, see how much they can engage the various property owners, especially on 28, to do the same, because some already do it. And when you drive down 28, you see the difference between those that care and those that don't. So, a couple of things. And then when you walk around this building, it's like, nobody ever washes the windows, shampoos the carpet. If we had a meeting in here, yes, this room was a mess. I don't know if any, you know, who's supposed to be watching the janitorial company, or if it just happens to be, it got messy between their cleaning and the use of, you know, this room yesterday. I don't know. I'm not trying to blame somebody. I just think those are things that should be paid attention to. So, and saying, you know, Bob told me there's a predicted three inches of rain between tonight and tomorrow, and I did see DPW out cleaning catch bases, but I think that should be a regular thing, especially when you've got a big storm forecast, and you have areas that you know are prone to problems with drainage. You know, a rake and a shovel, at least get the grates cleaned off. I'm not saying go down and dig out the catch base in every storm, but it'd make a huge difference in things not flooding. So there's a lot of that stuff that I wish people would pay more attention to. And again, my comment was, how many people, how many employees in this town are on the road every day? They should be encouraged to see something, say something. I'm not saying rat anybody out, but if you see a problem as an employee, you should be willing or able to reach out to somebody and say, hey, I saw this problem. Maybe somebody should look into it. should look into it. I think I think just encouraging a little bit of a change in the culture of the government would be going a long way. And again, I've talked to both Bill and Bob, and hopefully there's a way to figure a better way to do what we do as a town.
Mr. Sears, just just so you know, and and again, you know, keeping with the public meeting law and stuff, CEDC has attempted to fund a couple of people to do cleanup on Route 28 the last couple of years, actually the last three years, and we have not been able to find any bodies, even though it's we've had a budget item to do that. And your your comment is is very good, but this was going to be to clean in front of all the parks and and up and down 28, because you're right, you know, when the weeds get this high, it does not look very good. And and with any luck, CEDC will be able to budget that again, and hopefully we'll be able to get a body or two to do it. Because we did we did have people for two years, three years in a row, and they did a good job.
Yeah, and I said to somebody, geez, if you told me it was available, I probably would have done it, because I do half of it for nothing anyways. But, you know, another concern I have, because we never seem to have enough people to do what we need to do as a town, think about the Yankee Village property being redone and the drive-in site being redone, that's going to need attention once it's done. So somebody's got to figure out how to get some more bodies in here to do things, so they don't look ratty after they get all, even even the 1750 house. Things are growing up the way they weren't supposed to, you know, you're losing that view of the water already that we worked hard to create when we did the park years ago. So more things to think about.
All right, thank you, Kurt.
My three minutes?
Yeah, your 10 minutes is up. Request for fee waiver for of solar project permit fees.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I see the police department here. Would it be inappropriate? I'd like to see if the board's comfortable moving the position request, mental health clinician in the police department, to move that up in the agenda?
I think this is only going to take a couple of minutes, isn't it, Bob? On this fee waiver thing?
Depends on if if you want to discuss it for for long or?
My sense is the topic itself, Jen, tends to promote a lot of discussion.
That's fine. I don't have any problem with that, I just thought it was going to be a perfunctory matter, but that's fine, I'm good with that.
Is that okay with the rest of, okay?
Why don't we go to next item out of turn, then, the position request, mental health clinician in police department? And we have a memo in the packet from Lieutenant O'Malley, I believe, wrote that one. And we also have a memo from chief-to-be, Kevin Lennon.
A long wait.
Who our town administrator dated the 16th.
Isn't the official title in waiting?
Perspective.
Perspective, yes, that's what we landed on.
He see.
You can call him anything you want until November 1st, and then you have to call him chief. Okay, so which one of you gentlemen are going to proceed with this? Is it prospective Lieutenant O'Malley?
I will start, and then I'll turn it over to Lieutenant O'Malley, who put the the work into it. So the thought of having a full-time clinician has been something that we have been discussing at the police department for a long time, based on the amount of call volume that with the increases that we've seen over the years. Our mental health program started in 2013 under the guidance of Lieutenant O'Malley, and it has risen to to a program today that is modeled by other agencies and other communities. A couple of weeks ago, we had a Department Ed meeting, and the town administrator was going over the board of select, the select board's goals for the upcoming year. And I was looking through the SWOT analysis, and I saw that one of the things that was addressed in there was homelessness and the issue that we're dealing with that. And while homelessness and mental health issues don't go hand in hand, they do cross paths at certain times. So after that meeting, well, during the meeting, I mentioned to the town administrator that I would like to see mental health be brought up as one of the the goals of the select board, something that we have to start taking a serious look at in our community, because we do have a lot of people in our in our community, like others, who have mental health issues. We have a great team right now, the team is funded through a grant, but we are looking to expand what we are able to do, the services that we can provide to the community by creating a full-time position. So after the meeting, I went back to the station, I talked to Lieutenant O'Malley about it, and within very short order, we had a memo request to the town administrator for a full-time position. We met with Sarah O'Reilly, the Human Resources Director, to develop a job description for a full-time position, and then we were asked to come here and present, you know, where where we want to take it from here. So that's how we got to where we are today, and I'll turn it over to Lieutenant O'Malley for a further discussion.
Okay, thank you, Lieutenant.
Good evening. As a chief, chief-in-waiting, whatever we decided to call, said the program started in 2013. Originally, when we started the program, it was with the assistance of Department of Mental Health Emergency Services clinicians. In 2017, I believe, they they disbanded, the state stopped funding the emergency services portion, and we applied for a grant. We received a grant in 2018 to continue on with our program. We hired a part-time clinician to work hand in hand with our officers. So the idea of the program originally was to cold-call the people in our our community that were living with mental illness, that were creating either multiple calls for service or that our officers came across that we thought could be served in other manners other than police services. The DMH grant is actually called jail diversion grant to try to steer people with mental illness away from the criminal justice system and towards the social services that they actually need. So a lot of times, police officers come in contact with people that need additional services, and we didn't have the resources. So by providing the clinician, we were able to make connections and have follow-up calls. As we've advanced in our program, we've also advanced in our needs, too. In 2021, we applied for additional funding through the DMH grant, and we were awarded additional funding to hire a second part-time clinician to try to fill some of the gaps in our coverage. So right now, we have a grant for $120,000 that supports two part-time clinicians positions, as well as our program for our officers to come in that are 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 trained to go out into the community and respond to calls for service for those that we have a reason believe involve a series of mental illness. So as we've advanced in our program, we've we've also advanced in the things that we're able to do. We also put our part-time clinician in a cruiser with our officers, and we do what we call co-response, which is a national model of response in dealing with mental illness. So the the program is advancing, our calls for service are advancing, the need is advancing. We're seeing an uptick in not only calls for service that involve mental illness, but also calls for service that involve behavioral health issues, homelessness, co-occurring disorders. And we're doing our best to attach the right resources to our response, which is involving the clinician. We would like to advance our program even more to address having a full-time clinician on staff that can create a more stable program for us, more stability for the clinicians themselves that are currently in a part-time position. One of them, that's their only job and and working with multiple other agencies to to make a living. So we want to create more sustainable program for the town of Yarmouth, for the Yarmouth Police Department, and also offer some stability to a clinician position, so we can work towards future goals and future future plans to address the issues in our community.
Thank you. So after the funding assistance is over and done with, and so this would be in fiscal, will be 24?
24.
Do I have it correct that one of these part, there's two part-timers now, one of these part-time positions will become a full-time position, correct?
Well, we have to, we'd have to go through the process of posting it and getting applications, but we would, we would like to take one of the positions that we have currently and make it into a full-time position.
Correct. So it's not, you're not adding a new position to two part-time positions, you're taking, because one of the people at Public Comment, I guess, was questioning that. So I'm trying to get some clarification for that person's benefit. So one of these part-time positions will be full-time?
Correct.
The other part-time position will just remain as it was? So that we'll have a full-time position and a part-time position?
That's the plan for now, for the the grant funding from DMH, ever since we got it, have been awarded on an annual basis. So that's why it does end, this current grant rotation will end June 30th of 2023. We have been receiving grant funding on annual basis the entire time. We would anticipate being able to be funded again, and we would use that money to fund the part-time clinician position that we currently have, as well as the other things that our program does and try to increase our our operations. One of the things that it also does is we pay for CIT training for our dispatchers, our supervisors. So our officers right now, the model for CIT suggests, which is crisis intervention training for police officers. The national model suggests that agencies try to accomplish a 20%, 20% of their patrol force be CIT trained in the efforts to have available resources to respond to calls for service. Our department right now is currently at patrol forces 57% trained in CIT. Almost 100% of our dispatchers, we're having our, one of our newer dispatchers go to the next round of CIT training. So that that grant funding has been afforded us the opportunity to increase the training for our officers. So we we do anticipate still applying and hopefully still receiving that grant, but as we all know with grants, there there's always some uncertainty involved with that.
So the idea of the crisis intervention training with officers is so so that they would recognize situations when they can make the appropriate referral? Is that the basic idea?
Well, the the crisis intervention training is about awareness and acknowledgement. They go through a week's worth of training where there's different topics presented during that training, basically to get officers to understand that there is a difference between dealing with somebody that is living with mental illness and possibly in crisis, and somebody that isn't, that might just be angry or intoxicated of some sort. So having that awareness and that understanding can guide officers in the the different approaches to deal with them. And along with that is also identifying resources that may be in, come along afterwards to help those people deal with their crisis. One of the original goals of our CIT, of our outreach program, was to get those people that are living in with mental illness in our community outside of their crisis time. So to visit them on a on a Tuesday morning when they maybe just woke up and are having their coffee and to knock on the door and introduce ourselves and and bring the services to them so that they identify us as as the friend rather than foe, so that they understand that the uniform is there to help them and we're bringing them services. So that's one of the original goals, and we still try to work towards towards that as well. And the CIT training is is part of that, to give our offices the foundation to be able to create those relationships and be able to then introduce other services, whether it be, you know, substance abuse or housing assistance or, you know, finding transportation to a doctor's, or even sometimes we've we've helped some of our our community members find employment. I mean, we've we've gone above and beyond the original police response to be more of a community response, to help bring resources to problems.
All right, thank you. So go to the board for questions, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you both for being here tonight to talk about this. In my last couple of visits to the police department, this is the topic that always comes up when I ask, what what are some of the issues that Yarmouth Police are confronted with that have become a real challenge? And over and over again, this becomes the number one topic of conversation. And I don't think the community really understands enough about how challenging this is for the department in terms of the officers, the demand on time, the demand on resources, and that, I think it's a very interesting term, jail diversion, but also I think the position, what it does is also allows the police department to more efficiently use its resources, to be able to devote personnel specifically to dealing with some of these mental health issues and challenges that are coming in with some frequency. I mean, the the call volumes that I've heard about are significant, they're not, this is no longer an anecdotal type of situation. This is, there's a fairly steady stream of call volume that requires this kind of service and this kind of attention. And when I heard that the first, my first reaction was that clearly there's a breakdown in our mental health system. But the system is not getting fixed fast enough to help Yarmouth Police Department or any of the other police departments that find themselves in similar situations. So I I fully support what you're proposing. I I applaud your your willingness to put this out there and get some discussion on it. I, like I said, I support it completely. I see other towns are trying to do the same thing. And I've talked to legislators and particularly I clearly get the impression that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, for the time being, is going to continue to put resources in this. So it sounds like grant funds will, are likely to be there for the foreseeable future, because there's a recognition on Beacon Hill that this is an issue that is serious and poses a direct challenge to communities and particularly our police departments. It's unfortunate that the services aren't there that you can rely on, that there are aspects of the mental health system that are collapsing. But the reality is, is that doesn't, that just makes, it just makes your job more challenging because you're dealing with situations that you just can't ignore, or you have to, when you get the call, when you're the ones that respond. And so this is the problem that, you know, I would love to see you not having to go for these resources, but you're in a situation where you you almost have no choice. So I really understand that. I think you're taking a very thoughtful approach, and I like the idea of making it very, very clear that you're going to continue to pursue as much grant money that you can get your hands on as you can. And I for a while, so I'm I'm confident that you'll be successful as you've been in the past. So thanks again for being here and and making this pitch.
Just to throw some some raw numbers at you, 2015, we had 251 calls for service for either, there's three categories that we use. In 2022, that went to 512, and as of today, we're up another up about another 30% from 2021. So as, you know, as Lieutenant O'Malley, you know, explained, this is a, this is something that we deal with on a daily basis, it's something that we're we've taken, we're taking a very serious look at, because we know that it impacts the police department and and other town services as well. And that's why they've gone to the lengths that they have to make sure that anybody in our community is suffering or having a mental health crisis is getting the services that they need.
Very good, thank you.
I agree. I think when we had the interviews a few weeks ago, we talked about mental health, and I think it was everybody's recommendation at that time that this be made a full-time position. So I'm absolutely supportive. I know that mental health issues make up a significant portion of the the crime and the response that the police department are making. Unfortunately, the state closed all of the services and just dumped everybody into the community, and schools are dealing with it, and so are police departments, unfortunately. Quick question, in '24, when you're looking for the full-time position, are you also intending to try to keep the 12-hour position?
Yes.
In addition to, okay.
Yes, so the the, what is happening right now is we, our clinicians just aren't, they're a resource for us, but they're not there enough time. So by having that full-time clinician and also having the part-time clinician, we're going to be able to fill a lot of gaps. Obviously, we don't close, you know, and when somebody calls us, we we have to go and policing has changed. It's not the same response to calls for service now than it was 20 years ago. We have to be able to bring some some services with us, and this is allowing us to bring more services, more time. So we we have all intentions of continuing to apply for the grant and have all intentions to continue to have that that part-time position as well.
Okay, I mean, full-time position legitimizes the whole effort in the program, and it deserves that and then some, right? So I'm supportive, I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for coming. Couple of questions, the, right now, the 120 covers everything? And so if 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 you were lucky enough to get the grant again, it would cover everything except for the 7140 that you're requesting that the town to pay for benefits? Am I understanding that correctly?
So, yeah, so with the remaining funds that we have in the FY23 grant, we're going to, we're going to move some funds around, and we're going to pay, if if approved, we would pay for the full-time position minus the benefits, the town will cover the benefits until June 30th. Ultimately, our goal would be to apply for grant funds, but have the town commit to fund the position, so in the event we don't get the grant funds or we don't get the the correct amount of funds, we don't lose the position. So we're looking for for two things, stability from the town, saying that, yes, we will, we will cover the position if the grant funds are not there.
position if the grant funds are not there. Lieutenant O'Malley does a great job working with the, the grant coordinator on the funding that, that we look for. So we anticipate that there may be a reduction in grant funding if the town does fund the position fully. But the funds that we, that we will get, we will use for the part-time position and then additional program, the program that we can do once we have a full-time person.
Operational question. When, when do you get your calls? Do they come at any particular time, like mid-afternoon to early evening, or crack of dawn, or whenever?
They're, they're around the clock.
Well, I know they're around the clock, but you know, clearly, you know, this person or persons would not be working 24 hours a day.
So the, the, a couple of things, as far as the, the calls for service. When they do come in, and we can identify them as having to do with, with, with mental illness, that's a challenge in and of itself. There are a lot of calls for service, welfare checks, disturbances, domestics. They do have a mental health component that our officers don't necessarily know of at the time. And we use our clinician to follow up on those things. As far as emergency calls for service, when our clinician is not working, we still have the, the hotline that we can use. It's, it's managed by Baco, which is one of our social service providers in, in the area. They have a contract with DMH. They can, we can access services through them as well. But the, the real benefits of emergency calls for service, if they're working, they can go. But the real benefit, when we provide services, is the after, the follow-up, the phone calls, the, the, you know, the visits to the home and bringing, you know, a representative from a, another social service provider to them, or giving them names. That's where the, a lot of the value comes from with the, the, having the clinician on staff. And when they are there, they're, they're great dealing with emergency situations too. But we have those resources that we can deal with it around the clock if they're not there.
Lieutenant O'Malley, that, that clarifies a whole lot for me. And I'm very much in, in favor of this. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. The challenges out there for officers is a lot different than it was many years ago, as I think Dan pointed out, when the state basically turned away from providing the level of mental health support that it had in the past. You, you, you're getting a piece of it in, in police work, to schools. It's becoming a, a social challenge, a big social problem, actually. And one of the things that, that you pointed out that I think people should recognize is in addition to these services, you do have emergency services at your disposal like anybody else does, where you could make that initial call. But I think the follow-up and the continuity is where the real value of this person in this position comes to light. Because an emergency response is, is just that. It's a very limited response to a problem. And, and they can probably intervene in, in a crisis, but that's it. There's no resolution to the underlying problem. There's no follow-up. There's no monitoring, or there's no efforts to try to change this person's situation so that their problem will be abated. But it's, it's tough because you're out there, you, you, you don't know who you're dealing with. You don't know, as our deputy chief says, whether you're dealing with a person that needs help or a person that's dangerous. You know, is this person acting because they have underlying mental issues? Are they just an angry, violent individual? Those are tough things for officers to try to sort out. And as our current chief has pointed out many times, that training is critically important in police work today for not just this kind of issue, but pretty much the whole gambit of issues that officers face. And that training will help with the decision-making that has to be made. So I too am fully in support of this. And I thank you, gentlemen, for coming in and, and making this presentation.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mark.
I'd like to make a motion that the, the board approves and endorses the, the creation of, of this position as outlined in the memorandums submitted to the board for this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, good. I have a motion in a second. And we have to approve it because it's under the charter, technically a new position, even though it's expanding from a part-time position to a full-time position. Just saying that for the benefit of the public. Maybe they're saying, why, you know, what's this big deal? We're just changing a position from part-time to full-time because it's, it's a requirement of the charter.
It's grant-funded.
And so we have motion. Any further discussion?
No.
Yeah, just, just to continue to try to get grant money as well, which, which I know you would do, but I, I just wanted to emphasize that.
Thank you.
Okay. You don't want to put any rider on this motion now. This guy's a banker. You got to watch it. So we're ready to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, four in favor, zero against, one and member absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
And by the way, very nice memos. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to backtrack to the item we skipped over, request for fee waiver of solar project permit fees. And our town administrator is gonna...
Yeah, just briefly...
Take the lead on that one.
We have received this written request to the board, and it was filed by one of the customers of Solar Wolf, but also who's a member of the, the team that helped with the, the Yarmouth Energy Committee. And, and basically, she's seeking on behalf of present customers of the, the Solar Wolf who had paid for electrical permits for the installation of solar panels. And then the Solar Wolf, you know, company, you know, took their money, which in, included, they, they had paid upfront for the permits. And one of the problems that they're dealing with now is they try to put the pieces back together, is that Solar Wolf went in on their behalf and actually got the permits that were paid for by the customers. And in order to get, and in this particular situation, you know, it's a partial installation that requires an inspection. And unless you have the actual electrician that put the system in requesting the inspection, you have to take out a whole new permit. And it's an extra $150. And I think the way she words it is that she's been penalized and inconvenienced and was hoping that the town, for those customers that have already paid for those electrical permits, that are required to take out a new permit in order to get work inspected, that they receive a waiver on the second permit. So that basically explains their request.
Now, on, on a vote tonight, are we voting just for the one particular matter that's before us? Are we going to be voting to waive the fees generally for all those people who may come forward in the future seeking relief?
Now, that is at the complete discretion of the board. The request asks for the fees to be waived to the customers who have already paid for those. So what, what they're, they're trying to request is on behalf of, and it's a finite list. There were only 50 or so customers in the whole program. And, and that, those ones that have those permits out, so it's a max of 50 customers. But, but that's what they were searching for is hopefully for, for all of those customers that are in a similar situation.
So if that, if this, had not that Solar Wolf debacle happened, they would have only had to pay that permit once from start to finish, correct?
Correct. So it's a second...
And if we were not to give them the relief, they would in effect be paying it twice?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I'll go to the board, but I'm fully supportive of the request. I, I think these poor people have been put in a very, very bad place. And if we can give them any help, I certainly would favor that. Mark?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'm interested in knowing what the overall cost might be, and if it has any impact or causes any problems in terms of the building department. I know the way the department operates is it, it's dependent on revenues to cover its costs. So I'm just interested in knowing. I, I too am very sympathetic to this request. But I'm just hopeful, I, I think it's helpful for us to at least know what the impact, if there are any other sort of attendant issues that we need to address, should we grant this?
I, I think overall, at the outside, what, what this could represent is $5,000 to $6,000 in, in fees to the town. But they're fees for the second permit for the same job, which we don't usually get. And that, it's true that, that the building department, it prides itself on being funded in large measure by those fees that are collected. But this won't cause any hardship to their department, nor to the, the operations that, that are funded.
And they've already received the $5,000 or $6,000.
Right. This would be additional. So it'd be sort of a windfall if, if you had...
Yeah, this would be a windfall if they had to pay twice because they've already gotten the money that they're going to need to support operational costs.
Right. But, you know, I would point out that, you know, the building department is also given extra work in this too, which they'd have to do either way. It, it's always difficult when, you know, if, if you have a, a home improvement contractor that is unscrupulous or leaves business, then oftentimes that causes more than one inspection on a particular job. And, and so that's a hardship. So the, the building department is not just sitting back, you know, and, and they've been great about it. You know, they're in there conducting the extra inspections, but, but they don't have the authority to, to waive any fees or anything. So their hands are tied. And, and I, I think that, you know, they'd be fine to see it resolved by the Board of Selectmen and that they'll continue to, you know, go the extra mile, conduct all of the inspections. And, but, but they, they do point out correctly that you need another permit in, in order to trigger the whole inspection process. They can't just run out back and forth and be inspecting things.
No, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. I just wanted to get it on the record that our, our granting this does not create any hardship for the building department and its operations. So, thank you.
Dan?
Thank you. That information was helpful. I think this is the absolute least we can do to help these people. So I'm very supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Peter?
Bob, we have a, we have a finite number of, the number of folks that this affects, correct?
Yes.
And in addition, not, not everyone paid their fee to the building department. Some of them paid it to Solar Wolf, and Solar Wolf didn't necessarily pull a permit on the other side. So in most cases, my understanding is the building department did get a fee, but not in all, not in all cases. Is that correct?
Correct. This applies to those building permits that were actually taken out.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm very much in, very much in favor of it. And, and if we can, we can help, help this along for our residents, it would be wonderful.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that the board waived the fees of building permits to customers participating in the Solar Wolf program who have already paid these permit fees previously.
Second.
Okay. A motion in a second. Any further discussion? See, none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passes by a vote of four in favor, zero against, with one absent. Next item is Green Communities Grant Discussion.
And we...
Possible vote.
Very delighted to report that we've made an application to the Department of Energy Resources under the Green Communities Act for their competitive round grants. So these aren't grants that are automatically conferred as a result of your green community status. This is a program that is a competitive program, but it's only eligible to green communities. So what we've been trying to do is be very aggressive in using the Green Communities Program for the maximum benefit to the community. And we held a, a process where we involved all of the town departments, and we submitted to each department what the program regulations were, and we solicited what projects they could come up with, which were the most valuable for energy conservation and met all the guidelines of the program. And we conducted a, a process where we prioritized them and established the, the three, you know, most likely fundable and high-quality projects, which included $30,000, which was proposed by prospective Chief Lennon for the hybrid police interceptors that we approved leasing for those at the last town meeting. This is to have the most highly efficient fleet of police cruisers that is available, state-of-the-art. We also have $160,000 in for the upgrade to the septic treatment plant to add an anaerobic digester, which will be a tremendous energy reliever, but will also be a, a very good financial benefit to the town and assist in the wastewater operations as well by the anaerobic digester. Essentially composts the raw sewage sludge that we collect at the septic plant. So that helps and reduces a lot of cost of disposing of that sludge material. And this will help move ahead the design for that program. And we also get additionally $10,000 to assist the town in its administration of the Green Communities Program. So all high-quality projects, and, you know, we felt those were the, the best ones. We hope in a future round to be prepared. One of the things that was high on my list that we couldn't completely pull together, but the charging infrastructure for the next round, I really want to try to highlight that and see if we can get as much of an expansion of the full electric car charging stations, both on municipal properties and hopefully in some business locations throughout the town to stimulate more municipal electric vehicles, but, but also electric vehicles in general. And, and so that would be a future round. But we are hoping to bring this in for approval of the Board of Selectmen to accept these grant funds. There's no matching requirement. And, but, but like I say, I was happy to receive this. And I really want to call out Kyle Pettisini, our Economic Development Coordinator, has served as our Green Communities Coordinator as well. And as you recall, we upgraded his position and invested a lot of, you know, time and, and effort with Kyle. And he's done really a great job with this. And so I want to salute his efforts personally because I, I really like the, the job. And competitive grants are always big with me, too.
Yarmouth, Peter?
I think it's fantastic. And, you know, it's quite clear that the money isn't only to be used for these specific items in, in the grant. And, you know, I, I think it's a feather in everybody's cap that, that we're able to, to generate this grant. I'm looking forward to seeing the police car with the hybrid.
No, no questions.
No, I think this is great news. I think it would be helpful at some point to get a further update on the, the, what do we call it? The, the bio?
Anaerobic digester.
The anaerobic digester.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. I guess what happens with, what we can say is this money actually makes that real now, right? Is that all the money that's needed for the project, or is there more funding?
It, this is, would wind up being a, a multimillion-dollar project, but it can be done in conjunction, you know, regionally with a, a private sponsor. And Ed Centio has been our project manager on that. And he is a wealth of information. And I'm completely sold on the technology. And, and the approach is extremely solid. And, and I, I think you'll be very impressed with an update on the anaerobic digester. And Jeff Colby can come in here as well and, and talk about some of the very technical aspects of that and how that assists us with our wastewater and the septic.
That's correct.
And, and with, he and, and Ed, and... And with he and Ed and I in here, I think you'd find it a fabulous discussion. So I'd be very happy to kind of move forward, get that scheduled. And I know it's a project that's been, it's, you know, a legacy project. There's no way I can claim, you know, ownership of it other than I support it completely. But, you know, I think now's the time. We have the opportunity to take some of these great ideas and make them a reality and, you know, sort of separate the wheat from the chaff. And I think that this is one of those projects that if we could get it off the ground, there's a lot of benefits.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that as a board, we vote to accept the $200,000 grant from the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, Green Communities Division, in that we authorize the town administrator to expend the funds for the intended purposes.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Did you vote aye too, Dan? Okay. So we have a vote of four in favor, zero against, one member absent. I guess we go back to the town meeting warrant for review again. Oh, is that next? Yeah.
I also have a new sources and use of funds sheet. I want to point out, if you still have your old one, all of the numbers and everything are the same. The only thing we really.
No, I think you gave us those.
We have the, we had the old one and there's a new one that's dated October 4. And I just want to point out, the only things that have changed.
This is October 4.
The board had changed some of the descriptions of the articles, you know, where the PFAS treatment.
I want to tell you something. Interestingly, on the, on the name of the filtration system for the wells that are contaminated, I got a call today. And the reason I got the call was because of the old description and the person wanted to know why these, we're doing temporary.
Anything. Treatment.
Approaches to this and, you know, we're just going to have to do it all over again. And I said, no, that's an unfortunate nomenclature that was used. So it goes to show you that, you know, that wording's important.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I'm very happy to have, you know, been able to have the opportunity to have three readings on this. It's good for the board in order to stay on top and make all the changes, but it's also good for the public. And I think by the time we get to the 18th, hopefully you'd be in a position that everyone's comfortable with the article. So that's the main thing. I just wanted to show you with this new sheet, the, essentially, we've made the corrections and I can point out as we go through that the board had requested at the last meeting, but there's no new articles, there's no new dollars. And so that sheet is there and if you'd like, we can go right through the articles and encourage folks to.
I would like to make another point about that. I know in the past, sometimes in advance of the last reading, we have approved some of the perfunctory items, articles, as we have gone along and then just left the ones that deserved a lot of discussion or debate or review, whatever, until a later point in time. And I was just wondering, I don't have a preference. Does the board want to do that tonight and vote some of these pretty straightforward articles as we go along?
Well, my preference would be for, because Dorcas McGurran is out sick tonight, that perhaps we wait for our next meeting or a subsequent meeting when she's here so she could join and we can either vote together. I think that would be helpful. I don't think we're, are we, is there any problem if we wait for another?
No, just.
Okay. That would be my recommendation.
You agree with that? Okay.
One thing I just want to point out for everyone's edification, on our schedule, we do call for, our third reading is on October 18. So that is the evening we hope to.
We got to vote on that date, right?
Correct. So on the 18th, you should be prepared to make recommendations, yes or no, or remove anything, any, but that'll be the, hopefully, the third and final reading.
That'll be great. Mr. Chairman, before we leave this, I'd like to just ask a question. And that has to do, we had discussed before possibly mailing warrants out. We've been, we've talked about what the cost of mailing the warrant out might be for people if we're trying to promote awareness, interest, the question of getting the word out. I do think we actually, now, I know we brought this question in the terms of the annual town meeting. I'm not sure doing it for the special, but there are some communities that will publish their warrants in a format that is readable, but also mailable. And I do think it would be helpful to know the cost.
Well, I.
If we were to do this.
And that'd be fine. I'll get those costs in. I just want to recall the detail of the discussion that we had on that point is, I think one of the initial complaints was that in the charter, it requires that we publish the entire warrant verbatim in the newspaper. And ever since the banner disbanded, we're paying over $10,000 to make that.
Right.
Publication. And the question was, wouldn't it be better if we mailed it out to everyone instead of wasting the money on that publication that people usually, you know, we don't have the.
Nobody reads legal ads.
And I, I don't know if you read today's paper, but the Harwich warrant was on today's paper. You could barely read it. I mean, I needed a magnifying glass.
I didn't even see it and I read the paper.
We'll get the cost, the mailing cost, and then you can compare the two and contrast.
Which you still would have to publish, wouldn't you, even if you?
I think we do because it's the bylaw. Yeah, but it would at least give us an idea of comparison so that we could at least discuss a possible change at a subsequent town meeting on the bylaw.
Doing both. I mean, just to have the information.
Yeah, doing both.
So it's a lot, have you registered voter?
Yes.
A lot of mailing.
It's a big mailing. I'll get the price on it. You know, it's a printing and a mailing because we would have to still print enough to hand out at town meeting. Sometimes you get in trouble, you know, if you say, bring this here, you know, and.
They won't, no, they won't bring it to town meeting.
Some will, some won't, right?
Most won't.
So by the 4th, you can get us that cost and we can make a decision then?
That'd be like telling the selectman, bring your packet with you.
You guys are great.
It's, it's great to have it ready for you, I'll tell you.
You just, you can't get to town meeting and not have a warrant for folks.
We ran out, I think it was at least once, remember, Dan?
I do.
People were trying to get it on their phones and people were giving them instructions as to how to maybe access it. It wasn't, it wasn't very good.
Are you talking about the town meeting where we didn't have enough warrants?
Yeah.
Oh, that was embarrassing.
That was pretty bad.
Mr. Chairman, in the past, we've had a public, a head of town meeting, once the, once the warrant's been set, to have people come to the meeting so answer some of the questions that they might have at town meeting so we can, we can do that for it. We going to plan on doing that again?
That was a point, that was a point that Peter Morris raised tonight. And I don't think with the schedule, I don't know if we're going to have that opportunity, but.
Run through.
I believe, and I'm not advocating anything here, but I believe we did it for the annual town meeting. I don't know if we ever did it before for the special town meeting, but the special town meeting warrant is getting more and more loaded, so to speak. I think it's a good idea. I think if we have the time to do that and have the public ask us questions or get the department heads here, have them available to ask, answer questions. I think the consensus was when we did that, the town meetings moved along better and people had less questions at town meeting and enjoyed going to town meeting more because they had a preview of the issues and an opportunity to get answers to the questions. So I advocate that position if, no matter when, if it's possible and convenient, then we can do it. I'd like to hear from the others on this. Dan?
No, I'm supportive of that and I think it fits nicely in November 1st, so.
Mark?
I think it's, I fully support it. I think having a meeting, a special board meeting with all the, looking at all the articles and providing information to the public makes a great deal of sense. And I would agree with you, your observation, or at least summation that town meeting tends to move along a bit more efficiently. And obviously with this town meeting and 23 articles, I think anything that we can do to keep the pace of town meeting moving quickly, I think would, is certainly in order. I want to, however, at least for discussion, the thought of perhaps, instead of the first, because that's two weeks before, as another alternative, I'm happy if the board's comfortable meeting, since we can't meet the 8th, which is an election.
Election day.
Right, that's the reason why we wouldn't be doing it the week before. I have no problems having a special meeting on the 9th, for example, Wednesday night, and devoting that to this. If that doesn't work, then I think the only option is the first, but I'm willing to consider if the board's interested.
Wednesday, what does, what does the 10th look like?
And the 10th.
Is that a problem for you?
Um.
Anybody, 9th or 10th?
I think it might.
I want to just give a little flexibility for getting the right people here, that's all.
I don't think we need to necessarily decide on it tonight. I think we can probably decide on.
I agree with your suggestion that I think it'd be better with a little bit more proximity to the.
Yeah, because I think we're going through the election. The election itself is going to generate its own press, its own attention. And I think after the election, it would be helpful to try to capture people's attention. So whether it's Wednesday or Thursday.
I like that schedule better myself than the first.
Yeah, I think the first, we're going to do it and that's going to be, it's going to fade.
Closer to the election.
Yeah, I think the election is going to get in the way of it all.
Yeah, as of, as of right now, I'm free the 9th and the 10th in the evening.
I can do either.
Yeah, and I'm happy to leave, you know, having said that, I'm happy.
Why don't you check with the department heads on that and what, see what date's better for them, the 9th, the 10th? I would think we'd want them there, or at least the ones that have articles on the warrant to answer questions. So we have, we have people walking away informed rather than just asking us questions and still having some reservations or doubts about things.
If I may, we could have the presentation ready by then, so the standard presentation we use, we could have it ready by that date and.
Yeah.
For that sort of venue.
But that works better, too, the timing?
Yeah, I mean, we could have it by your meeting on the 19th, but it won't have all the graphics that the departments might have. But by the 9th or 10th, we can have them add some of their slides, so.
That'd be good.
Oh, those presentations are fabulous that Bill puts together, so.
I think to some degree, the value of doing it closer is that you probably have draft presentations together.
Yeah.
And this can be a bit of a dry run for some of that, wouldn't you think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And some people have expressed when they've seen that on video, that they understood it when they went to town meetings, so they didn't really have a lot of questions.
Well, I know that, I know when we did this in the past, it was very, very well-received and we didn't get any negative comments. They're all very positive.
Well, I know the article on the diff definitely benefited from having a lot of pre-town meeting discussion.
Brief dialogue, yeah.
I thought it was Bill's speech.
I think it was robust.
Yeah, it was.
It was. It was all of that. All right, so let's go through the warrant articles.
Let me just read through them quickly and pause and you guys can kick in anything that you want. It's your warrant.
Sure.
Article 1 is the prior year bills, that's $712. Article 2 is the fire hydrant for the police training center, $10,000. It's a code requirement.
This is, that's interesting. It needs a nine tenths vote.
For the prior year bills.
Wow.
We don't like prior year bills.
Wow, that's something. Okay, one, 3.
Article 3 are appropriating the funds from year one of the opioid settlement, $9,555.68 to be spent on substance abuse prevention, under the direction of the committee. Bruce is not still here, but he heads that up. And Article 4 is a supplemental appropriation for townwide energy and fuel of $125,000 for increases in fuel costs, especially of gasoline and diesel.
Bob, do we have a, does the DPW have a number that this is, this is a good number? It's short, it's more?
They put in this number to take them through the rest of the fiscal year.
Okay.
That's their estimate.
You have any idea what the annual budget is for gasoline?
I do. I don't have it with me. I don't want to just throw out a number, but I can, I'll follow up. I'll give you the exact number.
Okay.
Should have brought my whole budget with me. I think this about doubles it.
So we don't know what percentage of the base appropriation this would equal, like if it's another.
I think it about doubles it, but I want to, I want to double-check that, that number and provide.
It'd be useful to have that.
I have the townwide energy, so it's a sub-detail account. I have that number in my office.
Okay. Number 5 is.
Article 5 is the vehicle maintenance, $125,000.
Dan, I'd be interested in the annual number on that and why, three months in, that we are looking for more money already. It's just some explanation.
Is this supplemental, number 5?
Yes, it's supplemental and, yeah, they've had, I guess extraordinarily high repair costs this year. They, kind of up to deferred repairs. So I guess they deferred repairs and now things are breaking down.
Bob, there was a, there was a public comment about some, some vehicles or a vehicle that probably should have gone to the trash. Do you know whether that is part of this?
No, I had the same conversation with Kurt late this afternoon, so I haven't been able to follow up with the DPW on it, but it's a particular vehicle. I don't know if it was fixed in the current fiscal year, the previous fiscal year, or what the status is at all, but I can check that.
Okay, that brings us to 6.
Article 6 are the conceptual design funds for the order control system at the septic facility. And it is the design and replacement of, there was an initial order control system when the plant was built that has exceeded its useful life and is no longer operable. So that was a key point. It was, you know, there was an idea before that there may not have been ever order control, but, but there was at one point order control, but it needs to be redesigned or replaced. And so that $25,000 will provide the conceptual design, not the final design. And clarified in the explanation, but I just want to call your attention to it. So Article 7 is the septic division capital expense and that is $400,000 for the replacement of the vehicle scales, which helps operate the facility, obviously. It's Article 7. And Article 8 has the updated wording for the mobile reusable PFAS treatment system. And article eight has the updated wording for the mobile reusable PFAS treatment system. And that is the SRF loan of $5 million.
And do you know that, do you know the terms of, of that loan? I mean, in terms of, terms of it, I, I understand that it's a quote unquote forgivable loan. Do you know the terms off the top of your head of what creates it to be forgivable?
I do not believe that the PFAS is 100% forgivable. It is projected as a 0%, but there has been a bunch of money that has been pumped into that program that they have not announced exactly the calculation, but there's a portion of it that is forgivable, that they haven't determined exactly how much. So what we're banking on is at a minimum, a 0% loan, which is the most favorable terms that we can get with a forgiveness component that the DEP has yet to announce the specific terms of. Which differentiates it from article nine is the lead water service inventory. Now, now that also has the updated wording. This one, they propose to be 100% forgivable. So it's anticipated that there will be no payback on the lead water service inventory. But, but that's not the case exactly on the, on the PFAS one. I just want to make sure that it's clear there's a differentiation between the two. I know that lead one was supposed to be 100% forgivable. So that's article nine is the lead water service, and you can see.
Are we going to be going out and like hiring outside personnel to do this, like a contractor?
Yes. This is not an in-house study. It's a.
So we'll be getting bids on it?
We'll be getting bids, and it's, it's quite an interesting process. Just the methodology itself, I think, has, needs a little forethought. It, it's a lot of work to check every single water service. And so I think they're going to have to, you know, identify clusters that were put in during, during certain periods of time where lead was more common or find in a neighborhood. If there's one lead, maybe there might be more, but it, it's actually a big, it's a big job checking every single water service in town.
So this 445 is just really kind of like an estimated amount?
They, they estimate that, that this is what it would cost to cover the whole town and develop in that inventory. And then I think digitizing it on the town's maps. That's another key component of it. But it's definitely something that's beyond what our team can handle, I'll say that for sure.
And again, it, it, again, it's for inventory and replacement plan, not, not to actually replace the lead. It's just for inventory.
Right, this is just to find out where they are. And so the idea would be, the second part of the program, we'd be seeking construction funds, and hopefully that would be a similar type of program to abate the lead. So this is not the abatement.
Right, and I, and I would assume when they do the 6A project, that this will happen for that section anyways, irrespective.
Yeah, come to think of it, that I wish Jeff was here to confirm that, but they're, they're going to be right at those service lines, and they'll be seeing them, and they'll be. I, I think, one day, I'm not sure, but didn't he say every service line's going to be replaced?
Yes, yeah, on, on.
Wow, that, that'll be abatement right there.
I think those are coming out.
So that's taken care of. Which is a good point to make, because, you know, it's a, it's a big, important area. And one that's very old.
Yes, the oldest. I think it's the oldest in the town.
So that's article nine. And article 10 is the fire department strategic planning with the leadership development piece in there. I don't need an answer tonight, Bob, but I would like an explanation as to why we need a consultant to do this work, why it can't be done in-house. Well, you know, I, I, I can give you an answer. I have discussed it with the, with the acting chief. And, you know, based on the selectmen's discussions, we've had some, you know, very long heart-to-heart discussions on the whole issue generally. And, and I think that, you know, the department has never engaged in this type of work. It has evolved a culture that really has kind of separated in many respects, you know, some of the collective bargaining, you know, agency from the management of the department. And, you know, the, the way it's set up is it's almost as if the chief and the deputy chief are kind of isolated from the other department just by virtue of whether you're union and non-union. And that, you know, we really need a culture change to completely involve the entire command staff and the lower people in the organization towards developing, you know, that culture of leadership where people are prepared to take over the whole department. Now, you know, we have the captains that may not necessarily see themselves or may not have been given the opportunity to participate in leadership development activities. And I, I, I think if you've never done this type of work, to start with a consultant that helps you develop framework to move forward with the internal staff, it, it's very difficult to overcome some of the cultural biases and differences and things of that nature that serve as obstacles to that leadership development. So I just would say, I fully support having some consulting help to develop that framework that hopefully can involve all of the staff members that can take the ball and run with it. And the, I'm, I'm looking at the idea, what do we do? Can we set up a system that we can keep moving it forward and make improvements? And, and I would say that, you know, there's a lot of very highly qualified individuals in that department. And if you told them that they had to take this and do it on their own, you know, they'd give it their best try and their best shot, and they'd all work very, very hard. But, you know, I, I think at least setting it up with this type of an approach may make it easier to overcome some of those cultural issues that have prevented us from, you know, kind of getting to the next level. It just seems chief after chief, we, we start off strong, but then ultimately we, we have a, a break between, you know, the chief and the deputy and everyone else. And, and how do you integrate leadership from the top to the bottom of an organization? And, you know, invest in, in your people and so can it be done in-house? It, it certainly could, but I, I think that this gives them more of an opportunity to hopefully succeed. Okay. It's not a lot of money. It's just curious as to why. Rational sound. So that's article 10. Article 11 is the fire department capital. And we've added a little clarification on the brush truck and, and the gear dryer. And, and again, this is $76,000 that leverages over $1 million in federal grants. So this is just the matching portion of some pretty substantial grants. And that's why we had to move it from normally, the fire capital would appear at the annual town meeting. But it's been moved to the special town meeting so we can take advantage of these grant opportunities and not lose the $1 million. So that's article 11. And article 12 is the wastewater financing transfer from the free cash that we collected for short-term rentals in the equivalent amount, as well as the septicage host fee equivalent amount. And $6,407 for the septicage betterments, total of $1,008, and that's part of the pre-funding program to use those like amounts every year. So we've done this the last two years, I think so, maybe the third year. And article 13 is with, with respect to the term for sewer betterments, which the acceptance of general laws, chapter 83, section 15D authorizes sewer betterment assessments for a period up to 30 years. So it doesn't sit a year, but the, without this statute, the maximum is 20 years, and this makes the maximum 30 years. It just gives the town more flexibility. Article 14 are the public education and government access expenses, which will provide for the current contract we have for public. It will expand our governmental cable television access program and fund the educational system at the same amount that we do every two years. And this is more of a stopgap measure before, when we do the budget this year, we'll have the funds from the new cable license that will be available. And I, I think that that's the time to propose our, you know, part of our long-term communication strategy, how that impacts the governmental cable TV. And I, I feel strongly we can leverage those two together. And that, but, but this program here will be a pretty significant expansion of what's going on with just the government side as well. Including having more of the public meetings on television and more public outreach. So that's article 14 for the PEG. And article 15 is the Matt Keyes Middle School Utilization Study. And as you can see, we've made that article substantially shorter and more concise and shifted a lot of the explanation, the, you know, the, the details into the explanation. So I, I think it makes article 15 a little easier to understand. And article 16 is the Recreation Capital Assessment Improvement Plan, which is $120,000 to outline the detailed analysis of our recreational facilities and what the analysis of needs and improvements that are required. Article 17 are the golf division capital projects that we had to move ahead this year. Complete the improvements at Bayberry Hills Clubhouse exterior and also to leverage the more consistent and, and higher quantity reclamation use of the wastewater treatment effluent to irrigate the Bayberry Hills course. So this creates the infrastructure that feeds that retention basis basin that can be used as a consistent basis for irrigation. And, and that's very important to the operations of that golf course. And, and also the Lynx Course Master Plan Design and Engineering is in there as well. So that's the golf capital funded from their retained earnings. And that is article 17. Article 18 is the Water Supply Conservation and Emergencies Bylaw. And we made that change, and we also added the boats, washing boats in, in the definition of non-essential water uses. And I think that some total, the changes we made there. And then I jump to the bottom of page 12. Is article 19, which is.
Bob, just, just to go back to article 18. The key word here is water supply emergencies. It doesn't come into effect unless there's a water supply emergency of a finite asset for the town. It, it's not coming in if there's plenty of water. It's only if there is an emergency.
Very good point. Very good point. And the, the other change that we made, if you recall, under the penalties, they were reduced to third and subsequent violations are $300. So the original proposal was to have a fourth and subsequent violation at 500. So that has been reduced to 300 for the third and anyone after that.
Because the state statute doesn't authorize 500?
Correct, under the non-criminal disposition statute, it has a cap of 300 on the fines, so. Section 21D of chapter 40. And article 19 is the open space acquisition for water supply protection of 9.6 acres off of Higgins Crow Road. And we'll have a map for that. The parcels are identified here. And that's a combined funding that we're looking for, not, it's 1.2 million. That is 600, $1.2 million split between 600,000 from the community preservation, 300,000 from the water retained earnings, and 300,000 from a water supply protection grant. So.
Right. Bob, are the negotiations on this settled with the, with the diocese of Fall River?
Yes, they are settled. We're still trading drafts of the PNS. But the, the town and the diocese have reached agreement on the terms.
Excellent.
Thanks to Chairman Stone was the mover and the shaker on that in his expertise. I certainly learned a lot through that process. Okay, so that is 19. Article 20 is the Community Preservation Historic Resource Projects, and they have 50,000 in there for the design and engineering for the next phase two of the rehab at the Taylor Bray Farm. It's primarily the interior of the structures that they're going to focus on now. And article 21 is to endorse the select board's appointment of a town resident to serve as a member of the board of directors of the Mid-Cape Ice Arena. Article 22 is the zoning amendment of the village center overlay district as proposed by the planning board, and they'll be in on the 18th as well to go through the, the zoning and an update on their comprehensive plan. And article 23 is a petition article for zoning which addresses the accessory dwelling unit by law. We'll be discussing this and inviting the petitioners as well, as the board had requested on the 18th, to discuss the petition. And that's.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman. Is the planning board having their hearing tomorrow night on this?
I believe they are.
So if board members are interested or the public's interested in following some discussion on this, there's a public hearing, I believe, tomorrow night with the planning board.
Right, I'm not sure the exact time.
And we'll have this on our agenda at an upcoming meeting.
On the 18th.
18th.
We'll have both the planning board and the petitioners.
Very good. So that concludes the warrant, right?
That concludes the warrant.
Last one.
Third draft.
Yep. Okay, does anybody have any?
One quirk that drives me nuts, the word is pursuant, not per.
It's what?
The word is pursuant, not per. Per means to divide. It's, that's just a colloquialism that's used. I, I much prefer if somebody is doing per something, it's pursuant to.
What are we talking about?
I'm talking about.
Did you find any of those yet?
It's on page 14 bottom. It says, she'll require permit from the building premises per section 301.2 of the bylaw. It should be pursuant to section.
Oh, that's.
It's just, it, this is just a, a term that people use to drive me batty.
That's actually okay. Technically should be as per, but it can be pursuant. You can use either. They're both correct. As per chapter whatever, or pursuant to chapter whatever. They're both. Generally speaking, in the legal world, pursuant is the word of choice. But we're not in a legal world. So you could say in accordance with, that's the same as pursuant to. Do this in accordance with chapter such and such. That's perfectly fine. That's perfectly fine. There's more than one way of saying it. I, I don't see a problem with it. But I would insert the word as if you're going to use per. Or if you want to take Peter's suggestion, use pursuant. It's going to come up in the watch the same way.
I have nothing more to say on this matter.
Anybody else? No?
I think we're ready for a board and committee action.
A lot of these are pretty, I think, straightforward articles that aren't going to probably invite a lot of discussion when it comes to recommendations. But I think the ones that will will be this, the zoning matters will be a little bit involved. They'll have, we'll have presentations and, and, and discussions on those.
I think water conservation is going to be quite fascinating.
I think water conservation is another one that's, that's going to be meaty, especially with some of the public.
Actually, I, I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. I think I would just put up for, for not, not for discussion, but for consideration to the town administrator, the CPA Open Space Article 19, that's really a water supply protection measure. I would almost label it a, it says CPA Open Space. I might say water supply open space. Article 19 where it says CPA Open Space? I would suggest that.
Page is that on Mark?
Page.
Here we are, bottom of page 12. Call it water supply open space acquisition.
Yep.
Water supply protection.
Yeah, water supply protection and open space. Yeah, I think the more we can define what it is we're doing in the actual title or name of the article. It's like, for example, on Article 21, there is actually no naming of it in the warrant. There's no, we don't give it a name, we don't give it.
Oh, it's going to have a name. Come on. Oh, yeah.
Right? What do we call it in the?
Yeah, let's, let's give it a name right now.
Which one?
It doesn't have, that's the only article. Well, Article 22, too.
22 doesn't have a name?
Yeah, in, in this, in this list, you call it Appointment to Mid-Cape Ice. Actually, it's a, it should be Appointment to Tony Kent Arena Board. Isn't that what it is?
No, well, it's, that's the unofficial name. In the documents, it says Mid-Cape, but we can call it Tony Kent because everyone.
I think you should stick with.
What?
What it is and any explanation you can give to Tony Kent. But I think to be precise, we should give it whatever the legal name is.
Well, right now, there's no, there is no title to it. It just.
No, not the article. I'm talking about the entity.
Oh.
I'm not talking about.
Oh, I see. Is it officially?
Page are you on with that, Mark?
I'm on page 14. At the top of the page. So is it called, see, the thing is, is, yeah, see, in the, in the, in the dis, explanation of it, it does explain it Tony Kent Arena, which is good.
Does it use that word?
Maybe it's best just to keep it that way in the title to the article. Appointment to Mid-Cape Ice Arena Board.
Their website list them as Tony Kent Arena, their, in their website address.
Yeah, does it say anything else that has a cross-reference?
I know, but because this is a vote of legal significance, I think whatever they call the, you know, whatever their organizing documents call them, that's who we should appoint to. And then in the expl, you know, it's just like any, you get a lot of business names and their DBA is not even close to what the incorporated name is. It's so, so-and-so doing business as. And then most people refer to it under the DBA. It's kind of similar here. Most people, almost everybody calls it the Tony Kent Arena.
Right.
But if it's called something else legally and we're asking the people for authority to appoint, I think we have to properly identify that legal entity we're appointing to.
They refer to themselves as the TK, TKA Board as the Board of Directors, the Tony Kent Arena Board.
Yeah.
See, what happened was they voted to rename themselves, but they, the articles incorporation are clear that it's the Mid-Cape Ice Arena Incorporated and, but they're known as Tony Kent. So that's why we put Tony Kent in parentheses.
Yeah, their articles, the bylaws is Mid-Cape Ice Arena, Inc. That's what the bylaw lists.
So do we, are we still looking for a title for this?
We're good.
We got it.
And then we also named.
Are we going to title this Appointment to?
Board of Directors of Mid-Cape Ice Arena, period. And then to see if.
Appointment to Board of Directors?
So those, those are my final comments. Thank you.
Anything else you see, don't hesitate. Shout it out. And if you see something tomorrow, send me a note. I'll follow up with everything.
I'm, I'm interested in talking further on the justification for the fire strategic planning. I thought the discussion tonight was good on it, but I think we, we need to spend a little more time with it because I, I think it's going to provoke more questions. So I'm happy to help. I've, I, in, in, in the preparation for it, it's not unusual for fire departments to have strategic plans. It's very common. And when you think about Yarmouth situation, it's been a long time since we've had a change, I believe, in Fire Chief, maybe not that long, but the last time we had a transition. So it's not uncommon for fire departments to develop strategic plans in sort of looking at long-term issues that the department will have to face and assessing how methods and techniques in terms of, or strategies to address them. And there may be some value in just sort of at least making ourselves aware of the fact that this is a common type of initiative that's done in many departments. And there are a number of benefits in terms of doing it. In many cases, it's organizational, but it all, it, it, and in terms of leadership development. But I think, I, I'm, I'm happy to spend a little bit more time on it because I do think that it might be helpful. I'll just leave it at that.
Anybody else? Bill, you have anything?
No, no, all said.
Okay, so let's move on then. If everybody's done with the warrant. Board and Committee Actions. So we got the, I don't think we have anything on that because Darkus isn't here. I don't think we would have anyway. Individual items.
Well, we did a little bit, an agenda review, Mr. Chairman. So I think we pretty much have looked at possibly having another meeting. And we've discussed some of the agenda items.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I was.
I didn't know if you wanted to.
No, no, we're on agenda review. Does anybody have anything other than what we've discussed previously for agenda review? I think those take care of the more immediate issues. And I like Mark's suggestion about putting the public input on the other side of the election. There's too many distractions. There's too much scrambling around. I think one of the things, what, what's our next meeting? The 18th?
18th, yep.
I wonder if we should have our town clerk come in again and give a update on the elections. That might be a good thing.
Well, she's going to be here because the, she's going to be asking for the execution of the election warrants. So we'll have a lot of the detail on that.
Okay, and maybe she can give a little presentation. I think also if you could include the flyer on the flu clinic in the packet, just for informational, we'll give another public announcement on that for the benefit of the people who might not have seen that. I think important events like that deserve some repetition. I want to make sure anybody that, because last, the last year or possibly two when we didn't have it, we had a lot of people that were waiting and looking for it and it didn't happen. So they might not think we're going to be doing it again. People get to be kind of creatures of habit in terms of, you know, what they'd done last year or the year before, say, okay, the Yarmouth isn't doing these clinics anymore. In the past, I've gotten, every year, the year they've had a clinic, I've got, I've gotten shots there. But I remember one year going on to the County Health Department to get it when vaccines were kind of tough to get. I went up to the old jail, jail there into the health office and I got my shots there. It worked out pretty good. So we'll, we'll do that again for, for an announcement and we'll have the town clerk give us a little bit of promotion on that. Okay, we'll go to individual items. Does anybody have anything?
Yeah, the, the comment that the, that we had from the public about getting something about the tax, tax.
Yes.
Changes on, on the, on the warrant, I mean, to me, on the agenda would be great. Also, we, I, I don't know whether this would be an item for agenda, but we, we did get an email from someone saying, why is the town way to water on River Street shut down?
Yes, we did get an email on that.
And I, I figured I'd drive by and see. My guess is because it's eroded and the steps have come away from the, the wall, but I, I don't know.
It's, that is the, the truth that, and, you know, we confirmed that with Bill Benetti. And Bill had also pointed out that, you know, there's a number of these ways to water that are deteriorated and unsafe with the docks, with the steps. And there is a plan that has been, you know, submitted for the capital improvement program, you know, to go through and make some methodical improvements to these. Now, the, the one that was referenced in, in the email is set to be fixed with existing funds in the department over this season. And so they don't need extra funding for that and they have it scheduled. So it hasn't, it's not a situation where it's just been lost and, you know, closed down by, you know, to public use, but it is being improved.
Chairman Stone, this, I, I don't think it's an agenda item, but maybe in, maybe in public announcements, you could do it at, at the next meeting and just, just very briefly say, you know, this is what's planned for some of the town ways to water. Is that appropriate?
It is appropriate.
Yeah.
We could announce anything we wanted to bring, you know, the public's attention to it.
And we also have a hearing that's going to be coming up on the capital improvement program where we can sort of highlight some of these efforts that, you know, DNR and other departments are working on, make sure people know, you know, what's planned, what's going on.
Yeah, it would be a way of, in a general sense, addressing some of the public input that we get. It's like this gentleman tonight, he came down, he didn't understand the process. He thought he could come here, get to the podium and get the answer to his question.
Have a discussion about taxes.
But he didn't know. I think what we want to know, you know, kind of get an update from our assessor is like, what's the process? How do you go about assessing properties? What was the average increase in assessments? And, and why are there people who kind of go off the curve, you know, somewhat like this gentleman apparently has? I mean, I think we all know that the average assessment hasn't gone up 20%. So if his, I mean, taxes, so if his taxes have gone up 20%, there must be some kind of special reason, I would assume, why, why that happened. I, I did hear from one person that it went down a little bit and I was surprised because I'd never heard that one before. But I do remember, as I said before, one year when I did, I, I did go off the curve and, and I, I just paid it. I don't know why I did, but I, I, I did. And it seems like he had a similar experience. So I, I mean, there's probably, probably an explanation, but I don't know what it is. So I think we have to hear from our assessor. And whatever other questions there are, but I think those are some of the basic fundamental questions that we would have.
Well, then, if I can just jump, jump in here. You know, there are a combination of factors that go into making up a tax bill. The single most important factor is the appropriations. How much money did we appropriate at a town meeting? That's a huge factor. Then you look at debt. What's been happening is, is I, it, we've incurred expenditures, schools and so forth. So I think I would pick an idea of a mini briefing or a white paper or a one pager that helps provide some explanation as to the FY 23 tax bill. I do think it would be helpful before we have a, an open-ended conversation, I think to have something in writing that just lays out some basic facts and figures with respect to the tax bill and actually helps explain how a tax rate is set and how the assessment is done. Because many people are unaware of it. They don't know, there's just aspects of it that are just not known. And I don't think people realize that, that it's so important, one of the reasons why it's so important to go to town meeting is actually the town meeting votes on appropriations and on the warrant have huge influence on ultimately what the tax bill is.
The number you got to meet.
Right. So I think the, the more we can use these as opportunities to educate and inform, I mean, there is a tendency sometimes to be somewhat defensive minded about it, but I think more than anything, we, it's, it's incumbent on us to find ways to educate the voters as to why that tax rate is set the way it is, why that number is the way it is, and to the extent that we can provide information about the process of setting it as well as information on why some of those numbers might be up. And, and, and debt is often a factor. You know, we deal with it in the past, but we often forget that after a while, some of these things kick in. We got what? Tech school, Matta Keys, you know, the replacement, you know? And people need to know where those are showing up.
Well, I understand all that, but then people do expect, you know, some kind of a modest increase in their taxes. But when you're the guy that gets the bill and you're off the scale and you're like at a 20% increase, for example, you say, you know, why me? I mean, how did this happen? And I don't have an answer for that. But I know it probably doesn't happen across, you know, in a, in a very broad sense, but some individuals are affected in that way. And we got to find out why and give them a, hopefully a.
Well, I think in those cases, in those cases, that deserves, you know, a, a conversation with the assessor's office or with somebody else. I, I can't make an assessment on someone's individual bill, though we can make some broad observations about why, why, where we are, how much the taxes did go up and where, where the exempted portions of the, of, of debt fit into all of this. I mean, there is a way to provide a general overview in terms of how, how your, how your bill, why your bill looks the way it does.
Right. And I, I, I agree with Selectman, Selectman Forrest, that my thing of getting on there was to explain where it come from, not for an individual to come in and expect us to help him to get an abatement. Because that, that goes nowhere.
And I don't think, you know, I would agree that we're not here to advise people on abatements, but there's got to be a reason why there's certain people whose assessments go up a lot more than the norm.
Right. Well, in that case.
Got to be, that, that's a legitimate question.
Yeah, no, that's, I, I agree, but sometimes people aren't even aware of the abatement process. So in those individual cases where there may be a specific question about a bill, there is a need to understand how that process works. Some people just aren't unaware of it. You know, I mean, we, we deal with this stuff all the time. We, we know these things, but there's a large segment of our community that's relatively new. People that have just, you know, COVID refugees or recent retirees. I mean, we've seen our population bump up quite a bit in the last few years and I. And I I venture to say I see a lot of new faces in town, people that come from very different forms of government and other communities, so.
Okay, so we're gonna get him on at some point when we can, when the time permits.
Absolutely.
Anybody else?
That's my individual item.
Okay. Do you have anything, Dan?
Most set, thank you.
Peter?
Most set, thank you.
Okay, so we're ready now for the consent agenda, I guess.
Okay, and I do want to point out that this is an auspicious consent agenda in that one of the things we're trying to achieve is an implementation of the board's new charge for the Economic Development Committee that we have the 2023 Sand Sculpture Trail Contract, which is recommended by the CEDC. And I'll only approve it with the participation of the board of selectmen, like it says in our policy. So this gives you an advanced look. We'll keep doing this for any of the contracts. And this is the, I think, the first of a number of them for, it says 2023, but it's it's actually FY 24, right? It'll be the summer of '23. So that's in there. And also the Bayside Brawlers have a fundraiser that they'd like to do on this way sheet.
Yeah, at the dump.
At the dump, November 19th.
Recycling Center.
And Sunday, November 20, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Yarmouth disposal area.
I move the consent agenda second.
Just one comment, please. I I don't know whether or not we have a policy with regard to different groups coming into the dump. To me, it just seems problematic when you can say yes to some and no to others. I don't have anything against this particular petition, but it, I I don't know, I just, I'm troubled because I know it delays lines at the dump. We all want to help our kids, but years ago, we used to, there was a policy of not doing any of this. I don't know, it just, it's it's confusing to me when we say yes to some and no to others. And how many do they say?
I haven't seen you saying no to anybody lately.
I don't think we get a lot of requests, actually.
Yeah.
It really dropped off because probably at one time we were saying no.
We keep saying, yes, we're gonna get more.
I I stood there on many occasions with my rattle can looking for nickels and dimes.
Well, dunking down at chess, but not at the dump.
Okay.
All right. So do we, do we have a motion on the consent?
I did.
Who have a second?
There was a second as well.
Motion, a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Passes four in favor, zero against, one member absent. Town administrator updates.
Couple of items, I met with the finance committee last week and it was a great meeting. You know, we've got a newly constituted finance committee, a number of new members plus a lot of the old talent. What a great group of people, they're really.
Sheila there?
Energized. No, Sheila was sick, unfortunately, but the rest of the members were there and Sheila was.
Sheila Vanderhoff, she former town administrator.
Yeah, I I know Sheila, she's very good.
Yeah, she's terrific.
Yeah, she'll be a powerhouse on on that. And, you know, and we also have, you know, there's some business folks on that as as well, that, you know, financial wizards, but don't have experience in municipal government. So they look at things through a business eye, which I particularly appreciate. And so I think it's gonna be a great committee. And what I wanted to point out was, in in addition to reviewing, you know, we went through the similar, they loved our uses of funds and we went through the whole town meeting. But I also used the opportunity to kick off the start of the the budget process for FY 24. And what I shared with them, and and I have a copy for you, I was gonna hand it out right here, but I left my stack upstairs. I'll put it in in your boxes so that you'll have it and I'll email it out to you as well. I've prepared our draft budget calendar for FY 24 that outlines every one of the million steps that we need to go through to come up with a budget and a town meeting and election for the ATM. And so that'll be a great, as soon as we get through this town meeting, we're gonna jump into that full guns. So I'm gonna let you know, I've already been thinking about it, we're ready to roll, we're sort of ahead of the curve in terms of all of the dates and things like that. But I also point out all of the various dates in the charter that that have, you know, tasks that we need to accomplish. And I think it'll help very much orient us all. I've also been working with the finance department. Ed Centio's been great. He's such a nice resource and we work together well. We're putting together the details on estimates for revenue for fiscal year 2024. And, you know, our revenues are very restricted as all municipal governments, you know, by Prop 2 and 1/2. So it's important to, you know, really work on that so we know exactly where things stand. And we'll be prepared at the appropriate time when we're gonna come in and see the board of selectmen. And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have a formal review of the budget calendar. We're gonna have a overview of the revenues available for the oncoming fiscal year. And we're gonna request that the board of selectmen adopt the basic budget policies for the town departments that will kick off our budget process to go out to the departments and get their request. So I just wanted to give you, you know, right over the horizon, as soon as we get through this town meeting and the election, I'm gonna be all about, you know, energizing us toward that budget process and then working with all of the departments, coordinating everybody. And so that's that. And I, you know, I wanted to mention this too. I I think it's important in the context that, you know, we've done a lot of work on the capital improvement program, you know, just revamped that entire process. And part and parcel with that, I may have mentioned it before, but I just want to make sure that, you know, that one of the areas I'm particularly concerned in that that we spoke about before that I I think needed a more methodical and detailed approach is the whole issue of prioritizing and planning our coastal infrastructure projects. And it really needs a holistic look. And I I'm delighted, as you know, we talked about this last year and we got the approval to go ahead and we put on the town meeting warrant to get matching funds so that we could seek a grant from the state to do some of this coastal resiliency planning. And so we've received our grant and I had a kickoff session with the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. It's not a huge grant, but altogether, we're gonna have about 80,000 or so to take all of the detailed coastal projects that we have and develop those as individual projects and and hopefully standalone grant applications so that we can identify the highest priority, we're gonna prioritize them, we're gonna point to the preliminary design that that we have on them. And I and I think that the result is we're gonna have a single report that's sort of a priority list with details on all of our coastal resiliency projects. And we'll be enabled enabled to select each project and have enough data on that to, if they meet the requirements of whether it's the municipal vulnerability program, whether it's CZM, and, you know, we're gonna work with the state officials that, I I have, you know, a very strong viewpoint that the coastal communities such as ours, and especially ours where, you know, we've got coast to the north, coast to the south, the huge river that goes right through us, the climate change and adaptability challenges are much larger than, you know, a town can address just with its own property tax base and Prop 2 and 1/2. You know, you really need state assistance on this coastal resiliency and you need to talk their language and have these projects developed. And so I wanted to let you know that we'll be working on this and part of the process is involving stakeholders and like some community-wide discussions. So this will be in front of you. As it's developed, you'll see a lot more of it. I just wanted you to be aware of it. It's a major initiative, it's a major emphasis item. There's a number of department heads that are eating it up to their elbows. And so that's moving ahead. And I would just.
Can I respond to that? Mr. Chairman? No, I mean, I think it's great that we are getting our arms around coastal capital and infrastructure. We've talked about it quite a bit, actually, because of funding and a whole host of other reasons. You know, we have more and more projects being added to the list, but not nearly enough of them getting done. So, and we haven't really been that aggressive, let's say, in going after grant money in this area. So, but the projects need to be vetted, they need to be scoped, some initial work needs to be done on them to advance them so that we have at least a pretty good, some confidence in some of the cost estimates that are necessary for some of the grants to go after. So I'm, I think this is incredibly important, this whole development and getting our coastal capital budgeting in place. You know, water, I mean, when you think, when you think about all of the various projects that make up this, there are projects that have been sort of stagnant for quite some time. The Run Pond project, for example, I mean, that's, that's been on, that's been on the list of things to do for like 30 years. And it's really gone, no, I think we brought it to town meeting once and then it's still eligible for federal money for matching, 50% matching dollars. There are other projects that are probably eligible, but just not enough work's been done on them. So I think the fact that you guys, this has been kind of a, another legacy project, I think the fact that you guys are really diving into this, I think is a huge, a huge plus for the town and I think it's terrific. And I I I think we're all gonna be looking forward to the fruits of your labors because moving this along does open up the doors to getting a lot of federal and state money that's out there. There's more and more money being put into this bucket, coastal resiliency, and we need to position ourselves to take advantage of that money. So this is great news.
And hopefully without this massive storm like we saw in Florida that was just saddening, saddening. Oh, and finally, I, you know, I wanted to really thank Mark Forrest for his leadership and initiative. Today, we had, I thought, a great meeting with the Cape Cod Commission transportation staff to review issues associated with the Route 28 improvements and the statewide tip, some of the funding that, you know, we don't necessarily get a direct vote in, but there's just so much going on, whether it's Capewide, statewide, with the Mass DOT and the projects that we have that we need to to move along. And so Mark, Mark did a great job and Jeff Colby and I, you know, met with Mark in the Cape Cod Commission and we mapped out some strategies of the best practices that we can take right now to try to identify, you know, the boundaries of this project, get it move forward on the tip. And most importantly, make sure that, you know, the state needs intersect with the towns' needs. And, you know, we're talking about that wastewater project that we're really counting on having some savings from working with the DOT on the placement of those sewer mains underneath Route 28. And it may require us to separate out that piece of the project solely. But, you know, we need to be careful how how we do it and involve the right people at the right time and coordinate our, all of our activities. And, you know, what we learned also partner even better with local Cape Cod officials outside of our community that do get to vote on the prioritization of these major highway projects in our region and and make sure that they also are as knowledgeable and informed about our needs and the importance of those and to, so to develop those partnerships. It was a very dense meeting, I won't finish the whole thing, but but I I think it was a great start to highlight some key action steps that that we can take and I owe that to Mark, so I wanted to acknowledge that and I thought it was a great meeting. So we're working on that too. And it's just a smattering of some of the things going on right now.
Anything else? Bill, do you have anything?
Finance committee will be voting on the warrant, so you should have everything by the 18th. And capital budget, we've got a new software and next week, they're going to go through all of the cases with all the profiles with the departments. They're meeting with them and then probably a few weeks after that, the school department. So we should wrap up that in time. And because we have the system, the town administrator is able to sort of pass on his recommendations to CBC and then they push a button and it goes on to FinCom. So it's all digital right now. And we should be ahead of schedule on the capital budget as a result. So hopefully we'll have a recommendation for the capital budget items for the warrant. It'll probably be at, on the floor because they'll be wrapping up their votes. But I think usually we, they'll somehow get by when they are fall town meeting ones in the midst of the capital process, but we're catching them this year, so.
Yeah, good point.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else? You have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.